Okay, all is meeting back to order at 5:08 PM. Begin with public input, anybody here, public input? Hearing none, we move on. Student report, Cassandra Fitz, class of 2024, is that correct?
Yes. So, not a lot to report today since we're finishing up. Graduation was last Friday. Grades are closing this Friday for the end of the year. And we have half days the rest of this week because of finals. For fine arts, Pippin won best musical, best set design, and best lighting design at the Sonheim Awards in Connecticut last weekend. And for athletics, the spring sports awards were on June 6th. Nationals for track are next weekend. And all other sports are wrapping up and have either had their vacuums or are going to have them soon. For other matters, the hate crimes prevention workshop was last Thursday and Friday. And tomorrow we'll be meeting, there'll be a meeting between faculty and students to follow up about the workshop. And then also, the last day of school is June 20th. For my work report, I was just gonna talk a little bit about the hate crimes prevention workshop. So, we had two presenters from Northeastern, Carlene and Jeff. And I think it was very productive. On the first day, we did introductions and some discussions on personal beliefs. And we did a few agree, disagree, unsure activities where they would give us a prompt and we would like, give our views, saying whether we agree, disagree, or unsure. And it was helpful to hear each other's perspectives and beliefs. And also, we did some scenario-related things where we were given an example of a problematic scenario that could realistically occur in the school and what we would each wanna do in such a situation. And on the second day, we discussed a lot of things individually that we noticed that we think need addressing in the school and some concerns that we've observed. And we discussed some solutions that we think were productive. And we are going to hopefully meet tomorrow with administrators to discuss takeaways from the seminar and address some of the things that we brought up there. And I feel as though it was a really great use of our time. And I loved hearing other people's thoughts, experiences, and ideas. And I talked to a lot of other people following the seminar. And I think we all really got a lot out of it, especially the second day. And it makes me really hopeful for the future of our school. And I know it's easy to just show up to the seminar and just go through the motions, but I think we were all genuinely really into it and having a lot of productive discussions.
Excellent. Question, comment? My only question is, what's your summer goal? What are you, what are you doing for the summer? And do you start looking at colleges this summer? Is that how it works?
I looked at some colleges in fall and a few in the spring. And I'm probably going to spend most of my summer planning tournament so full.
All right, good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck. Well, it's helpful having you this year. And we appreciate your thoughts, Dr. Daley.
I appreciate what you shared. We, Mr. Cleveland and I have been reviewing some of those feedback. It's been fantastic, just great ideas outside of the box. A lot of great energy in the three days, the two students and the staff. The presenters who are from Northeastern, who actually do this work all around the country, all around the world, honestly, with professional sports teams and everything. They, they were just raving about the quality, especially of the kids, the ideas that they brought to the team. So, I wanna thank you and all your participants for doing just fantastic.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. You are released if you want to leave. Stay as long as you want. Just sign it, yes.
Question.
Yes, the maskers, that, it was in Connecticut. What was the region that they, they won? What, what was the competition? Anywhere you know?
Yeah, I think it was New England. Competition.
Yeah, I think somebody had said before, like, if your state has, but Massachusetts doesn't have a state one, so we're eligible as part of that group. And I was talking to Mrs. Kane, and the individual actors go on beyond, so we didn't get an individual award there. But I, I, 'cause I was curious if the musical got submitted to the next level, but I guess the next level, the jury is only for the individuals. But, so we have the best musical in the region right now. Which is amazing. Actually, I saw Mrs. Kane after graduation, and she said there was a lot of good feedback about North Reading. And, 'cause so many of our students went down there, and she said they were very well received. They were, they were just really, you know, excited to be there. And yeah, we had a good, a good representation down there, so it's all good. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. We gotta retire, or we gotta recognize some retirees tonight. Dr. Daley, I turn it over to you.
Thank you so much. This is something we've done for a few years now. And it's, it's just a great opportunity for us to acknowledge and recognize our retirees who are here tonight. We have a gift for you that's been prepared. And so, I'm going to begin with the person who prepares all those gifts for us. Who, who's already prepared with our 25-year recognition awards for next fall and left the note on today, so we need to bring it right down here. I did get a chance to give a community welcome to Anne Lindell in the graduation speech as well. She's just been my right hand for so many years now, even as an assistant superintendent. We did so many things together, but our relationship has really grown over the years. Started off in the curriculum office, and we, you know, she, she's done many other things in administrative positions over the years, started North Reading in the curriculum office, worked for Carolyn Harris in that role. Came over to the superintendent role under David Troten, worked under five superintendents. And now is retiring this June 30th, at the end of this year. And we're really gonna miss you, and so I just wanna thank Anne for all of her support. And when I call you, you can come on down. There's a gift here that Anne picked out for you. Everyone's receiving similar.
Well, he picked it out of the machine.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Good, good job. So, I will just introduce everyone that's here. I don't know if there's some people in the room that might want to say a word or two about anyone that's here. I could go on and on about everyone. I'm gonna read the whole list, and then people that are here, I'll call you out. So, Kathy Kazadz is a special education parent at the little school. Bill Casell, grade three teacher, bachelor of school. Maureen Cosalito, administrative assistant at the middle school. Joe Davis, science teacher at the middle school. Barbara Fitzgerald, English language learner, teacher for the district. Jane Karhulas, who retired a little bit earlier, general paraprofessional at the little school. Anne Lindell, again, Carol McHugh, general paraprofessional at the middle school. Diane McGuire, digital learning paraprofessional at the little school. Colleen Penny, special education bachelor of school. Jumanne Thorland, special education teacher at the bachelor's school. I think I got, did I get everybody that's here? Do anyone wanna say anything for any of the retirees? I just wanted to share that out.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Anne hired me 15 years ago. And from that time, we didn't know each other before, but since have become very good friends. And thank you for all of the edits and making sure the minutes are perfect. I appreciate that. And you've been a good boss and a good friend. And I just wish you the best.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk for once. I don't know all of you, I know a few of you. And so, if all of you are represented by the few that I do know, then this is, we're saying goodbye to some wonderful people. We, I had the pleasure of having Ms. Thorland in one of my daughter's classes, and it was during COVID. And it was a very difficult time, and you were always so wonderful. So, thank you. And I don't know if he remembers, but Mr. Davis, I was a student of yours way back in 94 maybe.
Miss Yapsiter.
But anyhow, thank you again. It's, I'm sure everyone, a loss to everyone to say goodbye to you all, but thank you. And I wish Mr. Casell was here.
How did Canadians come?
Because I had the pleasure of working with him on Explorer Vision.
Yeah, not, not as much as Jeff and I do, because even though we didn't have him, we... I, I will say, is the only one from the little school, 'cause they're all bachelor up here now. But I'll just say, like, it's, it's, you know, I didn't know Mr. Casell, but I think, you know, just anybody that has a name after them is, you know, worth recognizing. But there's so many great people in the name. I mean, Anne, I've worked with you for a number of years. You basically had to tell me what to do in my job half the time here. And so, it's, it's great. And apparently now, we have to read the minutes a lot more because, you know, going forward. You know, from the middle school, and my, my son was, I was very nervous with my son going into the middle school. And so, he always started the day at the main office. And so, to have the help there and just, you know, the warm face, like, was just so important to him and to me as a parent. Mr. Davis, currently, one of my sons has you. And, you know, I'm sad that you're leaving 'cause I have two more to still come. And, you know, it's just, and I mean, I don't know. Everybody that we've met in the district has been so welcoming to the students. And so, I don't know, I mean, it's always sad when we see people leave. And you guys have been such a big influence on, you know, on all the students, you know, in the district. But, I mean, for my, my kids in particular, for the little school, you know, specialized teachers and paraprofessionals. And I don't know, and at the middle school. Haven't gotten to the high school yet, but we're, I don't know, we're so grateful and just really sad to see everybody leave. But the one thing that's nice about it is when Dr. Daley gives us all the information to talk about the years of experience. And so, that to me means so much that we keep people for so long. And, you know, I wish you all, I'd love to hear what everybody is doing, you know, afterwards, but apparently we have to go to town meeting. And I'd much rather stay here and come to you. But, yeah, but thank, thank you all for the years of service. And we will miss each and every one of you.
Thank you.
I'll just, I'll share out that, you know, for many people, Anne is the first face, one of the first faces they see. For me, when I started here at the little school, the first person I met in North Reading was Maureen. So, this one hits me hard, 'cause I came in, that same day I met Joe, my interview committee, and they saw something in me that they thought would be pretty good. Appreciate you taking that time and listening to me. Working with, you know, Carol over the, in years, Kathy, how many years?
Eighty-nine combined years.
Eighty-nine, nine years for middle school, which is great. Barbara, I personally supervised as well, which was great with the ELL program when I took that on as I became assistant superintendent. Working with our parents has been wonderful over the years on both personal and professional things that we've done. Jumanne, it's been great working with you. And I appreciate our talks and our conversations. Always, you know, picking my ear about good ideas and things to come down with, and I really appreciate that. Diane, also working with you. For all the photographs you take all the time and sharing them with us from different experiences over the years. And Diane was, when we pitched the idea of a digital learning para, she really adapted and changed and moved with us on that. It really helped to define that role. So, for all of you, it's been a pleasure working with you. And Mr. Casell, I think we've, I think, he's been on a tour a little bit, 'cause I've spoken at a few different school committees with him. But certainly, quite a, quite a class of graduates this year. So, we thank you so much for all you've done for North Reading and our students.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Do you wanna try and get one photo with everybody?
I think Neil would like to.
Neil, you wanna go first?
I get, I get photos of them, and I'll, I'll need you, some people after the meeting, okay?
There's probably not gonna be any time after the meeting, because we're running to town.
I wanted a picture of Daley and Lindell, and then a picture of Davis and Rudolph.
Oh, Rudolph, oh gosh.
You just need the, of the whole.
Probably need that.
Sorry, Mr. Davis. At least we coordinated, or opened.
I'm sorry, I'm here, but we did.
Oh, yeah, they're coming up. Yeah. What are you guys doing? Anything, anything planned?
Um, the middle school.
We can travel off-season, and the kids are actually in school now. That's probably the biggest of them all. Travel will be a lot less impressive and a lot less expensive.
Congratulations, good to see you. Okay, Cam?
See you tomorrow.
Just for the time being, we'll always be the couple.
All right, let's see. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for...
Yes. Okay. These are off. Congratulations, Ellie. Yes, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Should I introduce this here? Thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda, with Dr. O'Connell here. Dr. O'Connell, are you gonna speak about?
She's like, oh.
Say what?
Yes, I, I would like to recommend that Jeff Simon needs to receive a service award from the school committee for taking the initiative to notice, as Jeff and I were both part of the building process, he noticed that, for some reason, when you approached the middle school, the beautiful plaza, the direct right to the main entrance was just an area of landscaping that was not well thought out, I guess. It became overrun with weeds and didn't really have any plantings. And it was just something that would get weeded. And then, as, you know, weeds are, they would come back a few weeks later. And so, not the most welcoming spot of our beautiful campus. And Jeff noticed that and approached me and asked what I thought about a perennial garden. And I thought that that would be lovely. And we got the necessary permissions. And Jeff has been out almost every day, first preparing the area. It's, it's not a very large area, but it's one of the first things you see as you approach the middle school. Has been out just really thoughtfully organizing where the, where the perennials will go. There's some annuals as well. But really, just thinking about the time of year that things will bloom, maybe attracting some butterflies, hopefully. And just something that will, I actually saw High School Science last week, they were out doing a walk, looking for vegetations and whatnot. And they were looking at the garden. And so, it's just a, just a very thoughtful, generous gift that Jeff has, has given us. And we will reap the benefit from years, for years to come. So, I'd like to just recommend that, that Jeff receive a community service award from the school committee.
Thank you very much. And so, we do have, well, I will just first say, I mean, I've known Mr. Simons for a long time. I think he is sort of a model parent through North Reading. I mean, I think he's always been involved in anything that you need him to be involved in. He's cared, I mean, even when his kids were out of school, he was like, he was the only parent that showed up at the budget hearing this year. You know, and his kids are out of school, and he still cares. And he was literally the only parent to come to the budget hearing. And so, to me, he's always been very involved. And it's, you know, it just, it speaks to who he is. He sees something that needs to be addressed, whether it's, you know, advocating for funding for something or whether it's actually, you know, digging out weeds and putting flowers in. And so, I think it's, you know, it's indicative of who he is as a person. And I would love to recommend him for this award. And so, we do have a recommended motion, if somebody would like to make the motion.
I can do that. I move that the committee vote to approve. Yes, if the school committee present Mr. Jeff Simons with the school committee award of appreciation to recognize that Jeff cleaned up a weeded area in front of the middle school. This seems like it does a quick, give it the full, the full, the full sentiment. But cleaned up a weeded area in front of the middle school main office and planted a beautiful flower.
Second? We have a motion, you can choose who seconded it. We'll do all those in favor. Opposed unanimous, and we were, I don't wanna jump the gun, but we were anticipating we were gonna say yes to this. So, we have a nice award here for you. And Mr. Simon, if you'd like to come down and present this to you.
Scott?
You can put it on the mantle. All right, the other thing. Thank you so much. Yes, Dr. Daley, go ahead.
Part of when we discussed this award, we thought about all the things Jeff's done over the years. I think it's fair to say that he takes great pride in this building. I think it's fair to say that we would not have this building in the form that it's in if it wasn't for Jeff and some of the work he's done. You have received this award in the past. We did look back at the history, Anne had looked this up, and we have a few going back, I think, to the early 2000s even, where, where you've received an appreciation award. So, this is a very longstanding commitment to our schools, and we're very, very thankful for this. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. And I have to say, with Maureen Cosalito here and Laura, Kathy and Laura, it gives me a lot of pleasure. And there are the people that are looking out the window. I didn't realize that Maureen was retired. In fact, I just told her this morning, this plant is gonna bloom in the fall. You see it in the fall. I put, I put the picture of the plant in the window, so she could see it. And, but we go back a long, long way. Maureen was the secretary of the pupil personnel office, so we go way back. Laura, when Nate moved, my son Nathan, who's now thirty, pushing 35 years old, if you can believe it, and living independently and working full-time at Children's Hospital. He's doing amazing, in no small part to North Reading school system. And, but Laura, when Nate moved from the batch to the middle school, Dr. Troten really made a big commitment for resources to up our game and inclusion. And Laura was, was hired that year. She was, she, you know, and she really did a great job and still does. So, and so, it's, it's, it gives me a lot of pleasure to be making this pollinator garden in the window where all these folks from our families' past can enjoy it every day.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. Take a look at it on your way to the county meeting. Just, yeah. Sure. Okay. Well, moving on, we have, do we have personnel?
We do. Ms. Wilber is on line.
Wilber, we'll get to you, Kathy, I promise. You're coming, you're coming up.
Caitlin, did you wanna share your screen? Did you want me to share it? What's easier?
I can, I can share. You guys can hear me okay? Give me a thumbs up, we're just, we agree.
I'm gonna just turn the volume a little.
It's a little quiet right now, with the thing on.
And I just want, while I'm getting up my presentation, I just wanted to say, I'm so happy that Jeff got an award because we, I concur that we have at the sci, at the science department at the high school, we've been talking about pollinator garden. It's been a good discussion piece in our biology classes. And I think that's something that we will certainly use in the years to come. So, I really appreciate his continued work. We love, we love Jeff. I am trying to present my screen. I'm not sure, somebody can't, or he might need to present what I do.
Yeah, huh?
Yeah.
It'll probably be just as easy as if I do. You just tell me what you're doing, you don't mind.
That'd be awesome, yeah. It's a quick presentation, I don't have much to share. I'll just start by quickly introducing myself again, just to keep there are people that don't know me. My name is Caitlin Julie Bear. I am a science teacher at the high school. I teach biology, anatomy, genetics, and bioethics. And I'm coming to you today because I would like to participate in a study that is being hosted by a nonprofit named WestEd that's partnering with Da Vinci Interactive. And basically, what they're doing is they have this online genetics curriculum that's about eight to 10 hours of coursework that if accepted into the program and also approved this evening, would allow my students to, and myself, to participate in the program. And then we would be a part of the study and science as well. So, I'll just power through and then see if you guys have questions. So, I quickly, I was trying to think what questions I would have. This was brought to me originally by Carrie Geron for our science department. And so, I didn't know much about the study myself or the program. WestEd is a nonprofit that seems to me naturally recognized. They're based out of California. They don't have any offices in Massachusetts. They live the closest with Washington DC. But it seems to me like they do a number of outreach between working with charters and professional development in schools. And, and they also are currently supporting 30-plus projects that are just in STEM education. You can go to the next slide. So, the curriculum itself, it's five lessons that are through epigenetics, which is an advanced topic in genetics that I currently already teach in my course. It's part of my gene regulation unit. I already do a lab, I do, we have the students do research. And we try to constantly find relevant case studies that exemplify epigenetics, which is, I'm not gonna go into the details unless you guys have specific questions. But it's a really fascinating discovery that basically our environment, you know, within us and around us, we know now there are things that literally change the genetic expression of our genes because of the molecules that attach to the actual DNA that we have. And so, that's gonna alter the transcription and translation of those genes. And so, introducing this topic to students, I think, is a really important one because it's, it's fairly, you know, I certainly wasn't taught when I was in high school. So, recent, more recent discoveries, it's a game changer because it's, we're, we're really finding that even we have our DNA, but then we have so many things that actually change how that DNA is expressed. So, this would tie really nicely into something I already teach. And I also, this is a bioethics and genetics course, so there's the ethical considerations part that I was excited that they incorporated. And I also teach like a unit on research ethics. So, I thought just in itself, we could also analyze how this study was done. Is it done ethically, things like that as well? So, there's a lot I think myself and the students could get out of participating in this. Here are the next one. And some logistics. So, there is a pile of information that I would send home explaining what the study is to parents. It's completely voluntary. And there is an opt-out form that families could sign if they do not want their student data to be collected or utilized by the research committee through WestEd. So, I think that was the main question. I would, I would certainly communicate this home to parents. I was thinking on paper and on email, kind of just catch all bases and make myself available, obviously, to questions via phone or email. And it will not be a part of their grade at all as well. I think that's another question maybe some families might have. I think that I would try to encourage all students to participate in the actual lessons. But I, I think this will only enrich what we are already learning in class. So, I guess I'll end there and see if you guys have any questions.
Thank you very much. Question, coming back, coming back around. I will say, I'm not smart enough to ask specific questions about the subject. I'm not, you, you did a good job of answering most of the questions I had. The only thing I would have is, is this just for this year? The intent is to do it for this year only? And would this be something that would be more than one year? Or is it just a one-time deal?
I think this is a one-time deal. And I'm not even, I'm myself, I'm not even committing myself to use it. 'Cause this is through this Da Vinci Interactive. They do a number of online curriculums and whatnot. I, for myself, I have no desire to necessarily commit to school to, you know, use utilizing an online curriculum. I just think it's something that would, it would be a really awesome opportunity for us to learn from. Like I said, it's a really complex subject. And it'd be helpful for me to kind of participate in something like this, make sure I'm hitting all the bases that I need to in order to give them the most relevant information.
And, and I specifically appreciate the slide we were talking about. It'll enhance the education for the students, And I specifically appreciate the slide we were talking about. It'll enhance the education for the students, but also will help you to be a better teacher potentially. And so to me, that's, that's an important thing. You have a question in the crowd?
Just a comment.
Yes.
I just wanted to thank the school for having the genetics program. And my son Jackson happened to take the genetics class in junior year back in 2015 and found his passion for it right away. And he is gonna be getting his PhD in a couple of years. He's out at Ohio State University right now in a six-year program. And he, and exactly what you were talking about, the tRNA, that's what his specific thing is. So, thank you.
That's great to hear. Although I think he would correct you and say the Ohio State University.
Probably not.
Yeah, just to couple that really quickly, this course, I don't know if you guys can still hear me, but this course has been awesome. I've had, just this past year, I helped a former student of mine get an internship through Northeastern or Co-op at AgGene. And I also helped a student get an internship at the National Institute of Health. And they're, they're in college right now that took my class a few years ago. So I think that it's a class that I know I'm certainly teaching college-level content. And it seemed to be very relevant for those that are going into these type of careers. So, yeah.
Excellent. Okay. Do we want to motion to approve that?
I just, I just wanna say thank you, Caitlin, for the presentation and for the course. I sit here and I'm like, I wanna sit down, I wanna learn this, you know. She's very good about inviting me to come visit her classrooms. And this is one I'd love to come see if possible. I love that we offer courses like this at North Reading High School. It's just really, really exciting. So thank you.
Great. So do you have a motion to approve the study?
Don't have a vote on it.
We don't have a vote on it yet. Do we need a vote on it?
Sorry, we should.
Okay. Yeah. Do you want to make the motion?
Sure. I move that we vote to approve the study from West Ed for the middle school year.
Second?
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Be unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you for letting me present online. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay.
So just a point. Typically, I try to put, whenever there's an outside study that's being conducted, I try to just do that and just to do the vote, just to make it.
Yep.
So I'm sorry to put that in the.
That's right.
We have another study later that's an internal, but that's more information. So.
Yeah. I was assuming there was a vote on it, but it didn't say it.
Yep. Well, thank you.
Okay. Now we have the seat back hesitation. Kathy?
Hi, everybody.
Do we have a microphone for, for working now or not? It's raining, we're good.
Do you want to present? And I can have slides, is that?
Yeah, I can stand up. It's easier, but I'm ready to sit, so.
We can see you easier this way.
But if we want to, we may want to go.
I don't know if it's gonna be hard for you. I can turn it sideways. Yeah, that's it. So, welcome to NRC PAC, 2022, 2023. Okay, go to the next one. We expanded and contracted over this year. So I'm still the chair. We have Jennifer, Lee, Elizabeth Brandon, Joanne Gilbody, Jill Gatsby, Mary Ann Keith, Nick Tosi, and Kimberly, Kimberly A. Pike. The last three had other commitments over the years and we lost them. But good group of people, okay? And also you notice that there's like boxes with nothing written in. We've been a little fluid in our assignments. I know it'd be easier for other people to work with us if we're less fluid. So we're thinking about updating our bylaws for next year. Okay, go to the next. But we were very busy. We started in July with pizza nights at Papagino's. We had two of those and that was for high school kids. And that was great, but we didn't have a volunteer to continue. We attended night out, CIT night out, so that we could have an awesome town day, so that we could, you know, be present and visible to the people. We also had, for the same reason, parent meet and greet at Horshoe Grill in October. We had our basic rights understanding, this IP webinar. Cynthia was good enough to have a meet and greet, again, being visible and present to the parents. Our first webinar, no, actually our second, no, it's actually our third webinar, but the first one that we organized ourselves was navigating the special education process, which was arranged by Nick Tosi. We can go to the next page. And then in February, we had a transition topic. That is when a high school student, a disabled high school student ends high school year and transitions to state services. So person-centered planning, how to explore and create a better future for your child. April was autism acceptance month with light it up blue. I also, I'm missing a line that's in my final version. We had a brief collaboration with Parks and Rec. Now, actually, we sent out an email, but I am thrilled because they knew that we were there, they knew what our mission was, and they reached out. This is the product of several, you know, a growing discussion. This discussion was also started by Nick Tosi. And it's just huge that they know who we are and how to contact us. So we hope to continue the communication. And I will have no hesitation in asking them as soon as I can think of something that they're likely to do. But in any case, because as I mentioned to Superintendent Daley earlier, I'm all about collaboration. You do have to work and get twice the impact. So in addition to the Parks and Rec, we have a collaboration with Bluebird CPAC. They have an annual college fair for students with disabilities. Some students with disabilities will never go to college, but that's not all of them, all of them, you know, line it down, students can go, et cetera, et cetera. So and also actually I've been, whenever I'm on a lot of failure lists, so whenever I find something that's worthy of being communicated to say to the high school guidance people, I send them the information. And that's been actually pretty fruitful too. Because, you know, you can't watch everything. Can't do it. In March, we had another webinar, supporting friendships. This is a very interesting topic. I'm just gonna say very briefly, a lot of disabled students have their family and then they have people who are paid to spend time with them, who may be very dedicated, often they are, and actually have genuine feelings of affection. But it's not possible to keep everybody in your life that you meet professionally. So this is a webinar about how can you make friendships for students with disabilities. And it's very practical. The first thing you have to do is you have to be, well, I'm not, even before that, you have to know what the interests are of the disabled person. Then you have to figure out where are they doing that in the community. Then you have to be there routinely. And then see if you can find a way to give back. So for example, if you like music, you could go to the local coffee house in Wakefield and help put out the chairs. And after a while, people will come over and talk to whoever it is. So anyway, that was a specific and, you know, just really excellent help to the parents. How we, actually, you know, neurotypical kids have problems with friendships. The same thing works for them as well. In fact, it's often been said, what's good for the special ed kid is also good for the neurotypical kid. And in fact, I did invite everybody. Superintendent Daley is really excellent about helping us get our message out to all the parents. Because, because of HIPAA, we can't be told. We have to volunteer to come to us. But he does the emails to everybody. So I put right on there, everybody welcome. We had a pretty good, we had about 30 people, which is like unheard of for a webinar, so that was good. And now here we are at our school community court. It's really been a great year. So our goals for, oh, does anybody have any questions before I go on? Nope. Okay. Our goals for 2023, 2024. Our highest goal, and I talk about this a lot, is supporting the school district. We're gonna show up for committees that we're invited to and may show up other times. And if you identify or hear anything that needs to be communicated, we're gonna do it. That's our highest priority. Our, this year, we're gonna try and have six parent training webinars and/or open meetings. It might be a webinar, it might be an open meeting. We're gonna focus on the IP. Some of you might know that there's gonna be a new IP for the year after this in North Reading. So we, Cynthia has told me that the school staff is gonna be spending time looking at the new form. And we're gonna try and get the parents exposed to it as well. So we'll have our basic rights presentation, understanding the IP. I'm gonna skip one. We're gonna have an advanced IP topics webinar in collaboration with a science lab at Tufts University. It's incredible. They're having, there's a scientific doctor who's doing a research study on IPs. And so they're gonna provide a webinar with some of the advanced IP topics. For example, how goals in an IP might be phrased or structured so that they're easily measured, the progress can be easily measured. And that's, I mean, that's really awesome. I just, I just found that. And so that'll be great. Then we're gonna have the universal design for parents. I found this by attending Parent University. Thank you, school district, for having Parent University. And I talked to the woman there who was, what's her name again?
Emily Pat.
Emily Pat, yes. And I said, this is great. Watch. I said, a whole lot, which is how I usually do it. And I said, you know, we would, I think that parents should, okay, I was in the meeting of the school district. I think they're working hard. I was there five years. But they went from build-up positions of strength in each school and then worked their way out. So I don't, there's probably a whole lot of parents such as myself who have heard a lot about universal design, but don't know what it might look like in a classroom. And they don't know how to respond and maybe bring it back home. You know, a lot of times when I see things going on in my son's classroom, I do it at home. So we're gonna have that, that's gonna be the first Wednesday in October. And then in March, we're gonna have, again, collaborate with Bluebird, the March Disabilities College Fair. So that's, I like to call that the program. So that's gonna be our program for the year, trying to work on the IP. And just to say, individual education program, plan. Yeah. So my son is 19. So I've been, you know, going to IPs for a long time and I do not hesitate to ask questions. And yet I did not really understand the IP until maybe like eighth grade. And, you know, it's just, there's so much that as a, as a parent of a special needs kid, the first thing you do is you become an expert in your kid. And you can't do anything else. It's like, well, it's very hard. And so then you start absorbing a little bit of flingo and school process and so on. And actually, my day job is software quality assurance. So, you know, I believe, identify the best way to do something and then everybody do it that way. So I just like parents to be, to say that they're able to absorb this information. Certainly if they're, if they could, we could all wait till they discover it for themselves or we could give them, you know, North Reading CPAC wants to say, here's some information. And then everybody, a lot of people won't be able to take advantage of it, but it'll happen out there. Now, visibility and outreach. We're going to, again, do town day and night out. But we're very excited. We're gonna try and do the batched school nights at the batch hood and little schools. Because, you know, I don't have any operatives in the element, no. I don't have any disability activists in those schools. And so I think a lot of those people may, maybe have seen a couple of emails from us go out, but they really don't know who we are. So we'll just be standing there, waiting to get questions and hand pieces of paper. And after you do that, after a couple of years, then the people will maybe email you back. Right? It's just the way it is. It takes a while to get, people have a lot going on. And then we're gonna have our annual parent survey. As I mentioned before, we have to, parents have to opt-in, so we're gonna do a survey. And then we're gonna have new bylaws, a new website, and elections. Not that anybody is gonna volunteer to run for the election. You should run for the hills, but we're gonna have them. You know, we're gonna give people the opportunity, you know, be transparent and accept input. So. And, oh, these are some pictures from events we had. We're at North Reading CPAC at Town Day. The parents meet and greet at the Horshoe Grill. And you can see Scott Buckley in there.
Hiding.
Yeah. And this is some of the kids, you know, at the Papagino's. And this one is, this is a picture of a picture. But what it is, is it's the teacher, I think this is Marcos, putting out a picture of the Understanding Our Differences pilot project, which North Reading CPAC had brought to the administration. And they actually did a pilot on it. So we're, you know, we're really thrilled. We're very thrilled at that.
We're rolling out the full.
What?
Yeah, we're rolling out the full implementation of that program for the upcoming school year. So it'll be grades three, four, and five, so across all the schools. So that's just an example of, you know, the collaboration that can happen. You brought that to us. We workshop that together, worked with the school committee, worked with the assistant superintendent, Michael Connolly. We were able to make that happen. So.
We are, we are definitely thrilled. Well, thank you.
Did you have any feedback from them, parents, kids? Did you get any feedback on the pilot?
Yeah, I did hear from a couple of the principals that they did receive a couple of parent emails, very positive. Thank you for sharing the content. Meanwhile, I was able to relate. Or we have a family member or, so it was very positive. It's a great program and we're excited to be rolling it out in terms of full implementation in the year ahead.
So that went forward, but Papagino's no more, right?
And on this slide, I wanted to thank Dr. Daley. I don't know why the names come out in this order, but there you go. Dr. Daley, Cynthia, Gina, Gina Sacco, and Scott Buckley. Thank you so much. And actually, the entire administrative team. It has been made abundantly clear to myself and North Reading CPAC that North Reading is listening and waiting for us to come forward with good ideas. And, nope, go back up. No, Cynthia. And, you know, we can, we can do wonderful things together. So that's really great. And then I did want to recognize the three former members who had to go do other things. But they were there in the beginning when we, North Reading CPAC started and were absolutely indispensable in helping us do what we like to do. And that's what we're trying to do. And that's it?
Great.
Thank you, Kathy. I'll just, I'll just say you have a ton of energy, which is great. And honestly, like a lot of, I don't know every district, but I hear a lot of districts don't have very active CPAC at all. And I think the main reason we have an active CPAC is because we have you. Because I think you individually do a lot of it on your own and kind of pull it across the line. And so I think it's really, you know, we appreciate the effort that you put into it and, you know, trying to make sure that there's a full schedule, you know, ahead. And again, I mean, you're getting 30 people at a webinar. That's a really good turnout, honestly. And, yeah, and so I, I'll tell you, I can't keep up with the schedule, but I do make it to about half of the events. And so, you know, a lot of them are very well done. And so thank you for the time that you put into it. And as you said, it might be nice to show that there's elections, but I don't think anyone's gonna, gonna be trying to push you out, so.
Probably gonna say, it's at this meeting, whoever's there, we're not gonna be letting fancy stuff in the forum. If you're there.
If you're there, you're nominated, so. Okay, thank you, Dr. Daley.
Sure, a few things. So I appreciate the relationship. It's always very productive, Cynthia, and thank you for being involved as well. I think it's so helpful to have those opportunities to meet the administration, take that edge off of like, you know, put a friendly face to a name just so we can make those connections. We're going to start some events. So our Family University, one of our kickoff events is gonna be a welcome in the late summer, so I'd love to have CPAC there. I'm happy to send something out, believe it or not. We do get, I know we sent out something for the finance committee. And within about 10 minutes, they got three parents that have already written back to the finance committee. So, you know, that's another way to get those. already written back to the finance committee. So, you know, that's another way to get those. I'm happy to try to make connections, you know. Personally, as a parent of a special education student, I appreciate the work that CPAC does. So I can connect with some others too, because I love the idea of collaborating, especially these great events like Work Smart and Not Hard, Work Together, and try to network. I love sharing out with you things that I see out there on the, on the web. And I know I've shared some events that you've shared out and that I've shared out and attended things. Northeast Ark is one that I subscribe to. One of our students, I don't know if you saw this, one of our students and sibling won an award for writing of their experience with their, with their sibling, which was really kind of neat to see. So just, you guys are all, all these different community groups are doing so many great things for families. So thank you.
Thank you. I would say, too, I really appreciate the collaboration that we have. I really appreciate it when we bring ideas forward. I love these events that you're doing where it's, you know, parents only. So if, you know, parents can connect parent to parent, I think that's so powerful. So I appreciate, as Mr. Maloney said, the energy that you bring. So thank you so much for that and I'm looking forward to more years of that ahead. Thank you very much.
I wish you luck with your outreach because I know there's probably a lot of parents that are just, you know, getting into the elementary schools. I think it's great that you're going to the, the elementary schools and having, you know, have a table, have balloons.
Yep.
But like, be you. And you'll, you, I hope, I hope to see more people here. Sure.
And I love the outreach due to the, as basic as it is to the Parks and Rec, because there's, there's such an obvious connection there that can be made. So I hope that continues as well.
Excellent.
Thank you very much, Kathy.
Okay. Moving on to the boring part of the meeting now. So I'm actually going to skip over Warren Articles first, try to get some of the admin stuff done first, because we're going to be at town meeting too. We'd always take both there if we needed to.
Exactly. We have a separate meeting scheduled just for that. And you did this with just, we had to do this.
Right. If we have time, we'll just do it here. But, okay, four minutes. We're going to go through the minutes. Liz here. Did you hear the note? We all have to check it a lot more carefully now.
I understand.
Going forward.
Not yet. Next time.
All right. I think I'm starting with the first one. I move to approve the executive session minutes of the school committee dated May 22nd, 2023, as written. Second?
Motion, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
I move to approve the open session minutes of the school committee meeting on May 8, 2023, as written. Second?
Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
I move to approve the executive session minutes of the school committee meeting dated May 22nd, 2023. Second, as written.
Any comments?
I agree.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Unanimous?
I move to approve the executive session minutes of the school committee meeting dated May 22nd, 2023, as written. Second?
Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Okay, that's the last one.
Do you want a quick question on this, Dr. Daly? Do we have to, like, at some point in time, like, unclassify executive session minutes? And how do we do that? I know the processes.
Yeah.
Do we have to do it at a meeting and just, we can do it all at once?
We haven't done it in a while.
Been a while.
We've got it back.
Okay. We should probably look at doing that at some point in time since, I don't know if we've done it since I've been on the committee, so.
I think we're going to be available, but you might have.
Oh.
It's been a while. It's going to be a bit fuller than I have it.
Okay.
To work, yeah.
Actually, we should maybe do that at some point. So, okay. Budget update? Mr. Connelly?
So, thank you. This evening, there is our student activity quarter three report in the budget update. Quarter three of the fiscal year does reflect financial activity through March 31st, 2023. And it does include reconciled bank account balances for all of this five schools student activity accounts through the end of March. And as we typically do, we provide the sub-account balances for the middle school and the high school. So you can see the balances in all the various activity accounts for our middle school and the high school. Things are moving along well for student activities. We are in, being audited currently. I, I do expect that we should receive that audit report soon. So Mo Lanson, Keith, this was a year, this was an audit year for us. Once every three years, certified CPA firm will audit our, the accounts. It was virtual this year, so there's a lot of back and forth and posting. But I believe we've gotten everything they need and I even expect that report should be released soon. So I'm certainly going to make that available. But I'll just, I think things are in good shape. I would expect, I expect that our report will go well. Any questions on the student activity?
What is the as of date of the audit?
So they are actually auditing fiscal year 2022. So they got, they, they had to finish the town and were a little backed up. So they didn't get going on, on it until late spring. So we should, we should receive it soon.
Just, I, I just have a couple of quick ones. Notorious and master, they've come down quite a bit. And I don't, that's the goal. Is the goal eventually have zero here and everything through the finances or not?
So the goal is that this, these will not eventually go to zero, because those club accounts are still going to exist. So if, if they're doing a fundraiser to enhance or supplement any type of a trip that might be happening or they're an activity for, for the club, it will be deposited in this account. And then the revolving accounts, the formal nature of all the accounts does support the user fee structure that was changed this year. Ticket sales is, is going to the revolving, is revolving funds. So the majority of the funding is generated by that revenue and that's why we see that.
So is this simple, is this sort of what we're expecting going forward somewhere around like $11,000, $12,000 in an accounting spend?
Correct, yes.
And then just, just to call out, I mean, at graduation, the class officers mentioned how much fundraising they had done. I'll just point out, I mean, almost $32,000 in their account is a very large amount from what I remember from any previous classes, which is really generous. And they had mentioned that they were going to use some of it for certain purposes now, but then they're passing some of it on to the other ones. I mean, do you know the breakdown of what's being passed along to other grades?
I have not.
No?
I have that, yeah.
Okay. Just curious, but, yeah, I mean, $32,000 for a class is really great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Any other comments on the budget, Mr. Connelly?
No, we are, for terms of fiscal year 22, we are progressing well.
22 or 23?
I'm sorry. Let's be at 23. So we are progressing well. We, we do expect to, to close out similarly to what I presented last week. We had processed about a little over $300,000 in prepayments for outside tuition, which is, was the target. But, you know, there's still some areas that we're, we're monitoring that at this time of year, close out some conferences. There also, there are a few little unexpected things that still arise, but we should be able to close out strong.
Thank you very much. Staffing out this time?
Not at this time.
Bids and donations?
We have this application for the booster group, is that?
Yes.
After?
I can speak to that. So we have had one of these in two years, but we, baseball, North Reading High School kind of booster organization has come forward to support the baseball program at the high school. They have submitted all the proper paperwork in terms of their application for recognition. They've, they've gone and done their, their financial. They've, they've registered with their own FEIN. They've registered and received their public charity number with the attorney general's office. They have their own set of bylaws and offices. So they've done everything they, they need to do. And as the memo speaks to, really, their, their mission is to just supplement school district support for the high school baseball program at North Reading High School. The organization's primary priorities are player and coach support, facility improvement, and to instill the ideals of qualities designed in our students and athletes. So we believe that this meets the criteria for recognition by the school committee under our policy. I have listed a recommended motion and submitted their backup information and bylaws for review. And I think they're, you know, we're certainly going to be excited to have them on board and supporting the baseball program. I think this is, in reality, they plan to sort of supplement, work with the Diamond Club, which is more of a higher sort of community organization that does a lot with the high school and other fields in the area. But they'll, they'll work at it again with that, as it is planned.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Paul. And I'm glad. So did we want to vote on this stuff too?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
Okay.
So I, I recommend that in adherence to school committee policy, LEC, that the North Reading School Committee vote to recognize the above organization as a support group and authorize the school administration to work collaboratively, collaboratively with, for the betterment of the North Reading public schools.
Second?
Motion, it was second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you.
It's a lot of work to set that up, but yes, it's a good, it's a good policy to, it's good that we have all that, please.
Yep. Okay. Fids and donations?
Fids and donations. Let me scroll through that. All right. All right. I move that the committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of $90,000 from the Hood School Parents Association to help fund the Hood School play structure.
They still have PTOs?
Second?
Okay, we have a motion, second. Any comments? I, I will just comment on this real quick. Question. Do you know, is that the full amount that they needed or is that just a partial?
So this is pretty close to the full amount. I believe the playground structure itself is a little over $8,000 and then this additional funding for some landscaping and some other work to kind of create the area. But they, they do, there might be a little, some little extra money that is needed, but this should certainly, about 95% of it, I don't think, is up.
And, and are they going to, because I remember being involved in Little School one.
Yeah.
And I remember we, we installed it with, like, they had a couple of people that directed us and then Boz was like me, trying to help install it. So are they doing the same thing?
Yeah, it's the exact same structure as the Little School. So I believe they're targeting like a weekend in September, similar to Little School back in, it was in 2017. So, so, so it's similar. The design of the structure is, is included here. But they did a nice job. The, the, you know, the support group did their homework. They did all the bidding process and they got quotes and everything. And they picked this company and this design. So it was a double process.
Excellent. Just congratulations for that and thank you to all the parents and community members and businesses that supported that. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Unanimous?
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of $15,000 from the Batch Elder School Parent Organization to help fund the wireless clock system for the entire school.
Okay.
I am going to get a little bit of soapbox on this one, comment quickly.
I think I'm going to root.
And, and just say, I appreciate the effort of the, of the Batch Elder PTO. I know the leadership there are fantastic fundraising funds, but I just think it's sad that we have to use PTO donations to fund things like this. And it's, it's representative of where we're at in the time and I appreciate them doing it. But I just think that, I mean, it's a little bit embarrassing that we have to have the PTOs pay for the clocks in schools. And again, that's not directed at anybody here. It's just directed at like where we're at in this time. But it's another thing that when we're talking about the budget deficit, we should point out more and more that like, you know, we literally have parents funding the clocks in the school because we don't have enough money in the budget to do it.
Play to choose.
Yeah, I mean, I could argue the same thing with play. I almost did it there.
But this, but this one is generally.
This is the one I reserve the comment for.
Um, can I ask, how did they know that this was needed?
He's in a capital for a while.
It was, it was, it was sheer.
Okay, so, so somebody was in, in PTO was paying attention.
Yeah. I mean, Principal Maloney and myself, we can kind of share this with them. They have, they've been looking to support because they've done an excellent job fundraising for several years.
Right, yeah.
To do something. And we were able to do through capital last year, all the smart boards. We, we done a variety of Chromebooks and technology, other technology in the classroom is in good standing. So this was one area, unfortunately, we all know, did not make the funding and cut for the last couple of years. I did really work hard to identify other sources of funding in other areas like we had talked about through facility rental and other issues. We weren't able to do it. We came up $15,000 short of doing that.
No, no, it's not directed at anybody. It's just directed at the situation in general, but.
Because we, we had talked about what we would do if it didn't get through capital and we moved forward. So I mean, but I.
Yeah, the total cost is 20, so we are supporting.
I thought you were commenting, Mr. McElhenney.
Yeah, no, I knew I was going to, you were going to say it.
No, I'll say, I mean, having seen the capital projects that didn't get funded as much as Little did, it, I'm, I'm agreeing with your point. I mean, there, there are too many good things that did not happen unfortunately. It's a list as long as you can imagine. So, yeah, that's the sort of thing you, you want to get funded, but.
But with that being said, we appreciate the generosity of the Batch Elder PTO for stepping up and filling the need that's there. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of $300 from the Hood School Parents Association to help fund the second grade field trip transportation.
Second?
Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of $3,015.60 from the Hood School Parents Association to help fund the fifth grade field trip to Kimball Farm.
Second?
Comments?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Unanimous?
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of $1,920 from the Middle School Parents Association to help fund the sixth grade museum of science field trip.
Second?
Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Unanimous?
And I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $1,000 from Chartwell's Compass Group to support a scholarship for a student at the high school.
Second?
The only comment on this one is not about the donation, but Anna McGovern is also retiring too, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. We should, we should, was she invited tonight or not? We should maybe try to recognize her in some other way.
She can definitely be invited. I didn't include, she's technically an employee.
Yeah, she's not, she's not. And I, I don't think you have to be here, but like.
I'm tired of her. It was kind of announced later, but we can definitely be someone with her.
Yeah.
July, maybe, yeah.
Yeah, be nice maybe if I heard of something too.
There's a, there's something for her. I can share on with you as well.
Okay.
And, and the other comment I would make is, this reminds me of every year at, at the graduation, when we hear the long list of scholarships sponsored by members of the community, which is just a phenomenal list. It's got to add up to, it's got to be 30 or 40 scholarships, which adds up to quite a bit of money. So another way in which the community supports us.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Unanimous?
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of $400 from the EFL Little Elementary School PTO to help defray the cost of buses for the fifth grade field trip to the Newtley Park.
Second?
Comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $6,000 from the North Reading High School Hornet Hall of Fame to purchase soccer nets to benefit the students of the high school.
Second?
Comment?
Same comment.
Yeah, I, I thought I had the same comment on, but about the nets of the school, but okay. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Unanimous?
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of $330 from the EFL Little Elementary School PTO to help defray the cost of buses for the fifth grade field trip to Switcher Park.
Second?
Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
I move that the school, I had to breathe ahead. That the school committee votes to accept with gratitude in-kind donations for an extensive list of school activities and expenses for the 2022, 23 school year from the Batch Elder School Parent Organization totaling $39,392.87.
Second?
Any comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Unanimous?
I move that the north, that the committee vote to accept with gratitude in-kind donations for another extensive list of school activities and expenses for the 22, 23 school year from the J. Turner Hood Elementary School Parents Association totaling $13,338.98.
Second?
Comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
I move that the school committee votes to accept with gratitude in-kind donations for the, off the list of school activities and expenses for the 22, 23 school year from the EFL Little Elementary School Parents Association totaling $24,965.21.
Second?
Any comment? My only comment on all of those last three is, it's very large numbers, and so we appreciate it.
A great year of fun, of work by all the PTO organizations.
Yep. All with a favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Unanimous.
And there's another one from Middle School as well. The school committee vote, I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude in-kind donations for the above list of school activities and expenses for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year from the Middle School Parents Association totaling four thousand, ninety-two dollars and twenty-three cents.
Second.
Any comment? All with a favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Unanimous.
I move that the school committee votes to accept with gratitude in-kind donations for the above list of school activities and expenses for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year from the High School Parents Association totaling three thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars and forty-six cents.
Second.
My only comment on this one is, it may not be appropriate here, you can tell me to shut up, but I mean, I know they were having trouble getting enough parent, did we know if this, what would happen if there's not a PTO, or did, was there any discussion on this? I know they're having trouble finding enough officers for.
Is this high school or middle school?
High school. Well, I'll, I'll just put my comment out there, and like, one suggestion is if we ever needed to, I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but I wonder if the two could even combine, high school and middle school, and because there's a lot of overlap between them anyways, and they share a building, and so, just a thought, but.
Pretty different.
Yeah.
Ring.
Yeah, well, just like the elementary often has like a fifth grade focus and then there's K through, maybe kindergarten focus, there might be a fifth grade focus and then one through four. Just a, just an idea, if there's like, or stretched thin on people, because otherwise I worry that some of the same people are going to be on both of them.
That's what happens, honestly.
Yeah.
I'm hopeful that they will figure that, but we haven't talked about it further than.
Yeah. In any event, we have a motion and a second. All with a favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Unanimous.
You were getting like very like, kind of like a auctioneer air towards the end.
Very generous.
Grants, yes, very much. Grants.
The danger, I'm sorry, the danger is that we over, that we pass over one too quickly, but they're all very generous.
Absolutely. And again, I think we all, we would like to not have to use these funds for clocks and things like that, but there is, for grants, you have a package in this survey, about a survey that's going to be shared as part of the arts cultural vitality index grant.
Just wanted to share that, so the teachers have done a fantastic job with all of our grants that are out there, we're wrapping up our various grants. Our arts teachers across the district are examining our curriculum, part of it is asking other staff members, and part of it is asking some students. So again, this isn't, as I said earlier, this isn't a third party coming in, this is something that was created by our own teachers that they're going to ask for the students, but I just wanted to know an everyone's rate on this, you understand?
Do we need to vote on that or not, then?
I didn't think, yeah, I didn't think, I just wanted to know an everyone's rate.
I mean, and we also voted to accept the money, so in a way we were voting for the condition that come with getting that money.
Yeah, for sure.
There were questions, I would take them back, because we're already getting concerned with, but they seem pretty, kind of questions. The data is going to be very helpful to us to then be able to, you know, in aggregate, obviously, you're sharing, not the survey results, but the, the results of our investigation into our arts program with, with the Department of Ed as a part of the grants. The bid's done a great job.
No overnight trip requests?
This time.
For subcommittee updates, finance planning team up on June second and June ninth, and basically we just prepared for town meeting tonight, so we can.
Nothing new.
Nothing else on that.
Anything else?
Yeah. Athletics, subcommittee, well, they'll, actually, for numbers, you mentioned, there's going to be an amendment to the operating budget tonight because some of the lineup for capital, I think, or the line amendments were not lined up, or the operating was, the line amendments were not lined up.
Yeah, not an amendment, but a, but a correction to the board.
Yeah, something. Okay, athletics subcommittee matter May twenty-third. Update on that?
It's a long list from the agenda, I don't know if there's what we should highlight, but.
Sure. I think we just got updates on all the, I think the biggest is probably the turf field update, you know, that soon as school ends, they're bringing in people to work on the turf field, and that work will, the plan is to have that done at the end of the summer, and be ready to go, scoreboards up and running. We had some preliminary discussions around lights and baseball field update, looks fantastic, if you haven't been down there, you know, make sure to check that out as well. We talked about, you know, kind of a reflection year end about the winners, the eighth grade waivers and bringing up kids and what our teams look like moving in, we had great participation this spring, and then, you know, certainly all of our teams did well, and many went off, we saw a few students participating now, and we won a few state championships, broke a lot of records, it was really quite an exciting spring, so I think that captures it.
For the, for the turf field, I mean, what's the, what does the loss of that for the summer mean for Parks and Rec and other, other groups? I mean, I imagine that field is used a lot even in the summer. Do they have been able to find out the locations of the other fields, anything here?
Yeah, they've known about this for a while, I think they've, they've made their adjustments.
Yeah, okay.
The only other thing I would mention, I, I, I didn't have a great link into the meeting, or my mind wasn't linked into the meeting as I was doing it all day, but the addressing hate program, is some work in the summer?
Yes, we're talking about that, and it's part of what we're going to start talking about tomorrow, when we meet with the students, Sean and I, and principals as well. We want to build on their ideas, but something we thought about is how can we, you know, maybe have something with student athletes, extracurricular leaders, you know, to start doing some of that work, as well as some of the substance abuse work that they've done through the Coalition. With sort of, we'll say captive audience, right, you've got a lot of student and extracurricular participants, and it's a great way to have an important discussion, because that, that's what I've heard a lot from that, is how do we get this message out to, to a lot of people and have this discussion?
And motivate us to listen.
The student, one, one thing I certainly heard from that too, is that they, they do not want to be talked to, they don't want to sit in an auditorium and have someone speak to them, but they liked about this was the small group, was the ability to, you know, it was like a circle of trust, and they all shared, and they want to replicate that. They even threw out the idea, I think I'm not getting too far, but they, they threw out the idea, you know, when we have PD for teachers, maybe there's an opportunity for students to come together and do some kind of professional kind of learning, that kind of community, as opposed to a classroom, you know, I'm just blown away by some of their ideas, and that's great.
Fine Arts Subcommittee matter on May thirty-first. What update on that?
Yeah, I was just driving, so I didn't take notes. But let's see, we talked about the AV.
If I have, you were just talking about.
Yeah. What else? They just sort of wrapping up, like talking, we were, it was before Notorious, no, it was before Masters headed down to, then again, we were talking about that, on coxide and we all were.
Yeah, Carla Lister mentioned the possibility of us hosting another.
That was it.
Same thing with those.
Well, that, but all this, the senior districts for, that's a, is that a chorus event?
Yeah.
Chorus event, yeah.
Yeah.
Still, still to be determined whether they would, whether, you know, would work, our facilities would work for them, but they're going to talk about that. But yeah, it's just a kind of reviewing another great, just like the athletics, a great spring and great year.
The virtual art show was launched, we talked about that a little bit too. Some of the, we're trying to do some pack of, the sound upgrades in the Performing Arts Center, and in this, in this room as well, to make this, to be able to be a black box theater, as a few.
Oh, yes, that was the most interesting, and I thought very exciting from my perspective.
Basically closing this off, and then you've already got these lights that are in the room, so it gets some ideas for, for having this as another theater kind of space, so, some good ideas that we discussed there.
So two, two quick questions on fine arts. We have the new fee last year, do you think that it worked well, do you think it allowed them to do what they needed to do, or in the future?
We were able to run two programs, so we would have been running middle school a cappella and with percussion, they have some ideas for some expansion in, in there, some other programs to run, if you have any other feedback or thoughts?
Yeah, I thought it looked good, it went well.
And, and then, I mean, and just, I mean, what do we have for the capacity for this? Because I was hearing for Notorious, like, they only added two members in this year for, I know some more seniors are graduating, but we actually have, again, I certainly find like if the select group is that competitive, but I'm just curious, I mean, do we have the capacity right now still, or are we still having an issue? Because if, I mean, I know with the middle school a cappella, there was a ton of kids went out, a lot of kids were trying out for Notorious, and, I mean, again, it's just more of a comment on it, but like, I guess the question is.
They were talking about being a second team, or a B, you know, a B and a, you know. I think this year they ran it sort of pilot, there was a larger group, and then there was sort of a subset of that group that ran, it's two groups, but I think they made more clearly defined two groups moving forward, and those are things we're going to continue to explore.
It's a great problem to have, that so many people want to participate.
Yeah. Thanks to the programs.
Okay. Upcoming, there's something scheduled, upcoming. Administrator report.
I just wanted to share a few things, graduation again on Friday night, I thought it was a great ceremony, challenges with the weather, but we, we were able to stick that through, it was great for the students, everyone was able to see, a really wonderful ceremony, great speeches from the graduating class, and just very generous gifts, as was mentioned earlier, from the graduating class. I wanted to share, you know, we've talked a lot about Logan, our service dog, who I was able to finally give the school committee award to, I don't know if everyone saw, I got to shake his paw, but I'll just pass this around from Mrs. Rhonda Miss Hannah's classes, just to, can't, nothing better than having a meeting with our service dog, just sort of an update there, so I wanted to share those down as well.
Excellent. I saw the video that you sent her on.
I know, I wish, I wish it hadn't been in the MLB format, I'd love to have shared it around with.
Yeah.
With our, with our colleagues, since we can all use a little bit of a break.
In terms of correspondence, you sent a bunch of emails to us this week, today about the budget, which, to be very honest, when I was listening, I love seeing, because I love seeing involvement in it and the challenges we have, and, you know, I would just say respectfully that there's no right or wrong in any of these decisions we're making, we're all hearing the best arguments we can, the problem is, it's, you know, you cut off your left pinkie or right pinkie, and, you know, next year it might be the left hand or the right hand, and so, I think the, the challenge is, how do we grow the amount of revenue or lower the expenses, so that we can do more, rather than, you know, not even fund all services, but I do appreciate the comments and people following along, and hope they do follow along next year.
Yeah, yeah. She involved when, you know, thanks, sir. You decided.
All right. And.
I can see Neil's headline now in the paper about cutting off fingers, I'm not sure what that's going to translate.
How did you guess that?
Yes. Okay, we're going to go back to the town meeting, we're in articles, just a moment here, next meeting is in fifteen minutes, is that town meeting, and then we have a goals meeting on July twenty-fourth, so because we do have a few more minutes, and it's easier to do it here.
Could I just, in a very quick, on July twenty-fourth, I threw out a TV, I haven't committed to the evening, but I'm wondering, could we meet early in the day, with that one for folks at summer meeting?
On a Monday, yeah, I can probably.
Yeah, don't, I.
Virtual as well, right?
Yeah, put it on, put it on schedule, then you know what.
Yeah, exactly. I'll send something around this.
Yeah, yes, that works. So in terms of the warrant article, we usually vote to recommend or not recommend things that pertain to the schools, particularly, we try to keep it to bigger, a lot of more funding issues, but things that relate to the school. When I looked through it, I asked Mr. McGowan, I identified five warrant articles that I think we should be heard on, which are Articles three, eleven, nineteen, twenty-five, and thirty-five. I'll go for each of them, and do a, what we're looking for is a motion to recommend, and we can say no if not. The first one I think we should be heard on is, so the first two theoretically aren't going into their budget amendments, but they don't pertain to the school-ish things in there, because we're able to move from department to department, so I haven't really seen exactly what the movement is, I think we'll have to be heard on that. But Article three is looking to, for a capital budget amendment to help pay the cost of designing and constructing the turf field this summer, so I do think we should be heard on that, and so I would entertain a motion to recommend Article three.
Motion to recommend Article three.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion on the article? All with a favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, unanimous to recommend five to zero. Article eleven is the warrant article that we're sponsoring, so I'm hoping we have some thoughts here. We have two hundred thousand currently in a reserve fund for special education costs, and we're looking to put more in, I don't actually specifically know what, you know how much they're, I definitely, they're just going to put in, how?
I believe a hundred thousand.
A hundred thousand, yeah, we didn't do it last time, that's what we were hoping for, but it doesn't specifically say in here, but I will entertain a motion to recommend Article eleven.
I move that we vote to recommend Article eleven.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All with a favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Unanimous as well. Article nineteen is the operating budget, we've been talking about so much, I think as you've all said, it doesn't have everything what we want in it, but it's a, it's cutting